Meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, start, we can get a motion to approve the agenda for today.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with one change. Megan notified Renee that she will not be here. She's out working in the field this morning, so I had to make a motion to approve the agenda with deletion of the item immediately previous, or prior to public comment.
I have a question.
I'll second.
When will that be revisited?
We're in a motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
When will that subject be revisited?
Actually, this is not really something that needs to be addressed to the entire Board of Supervisors. This is kind of like a, more of a management type situation. We approve reports that Megan's required to file and that type of thing, but as far as day-to-day business or day-to-day questions, it's not something that the Board of Supervisors needs to address in a, in a public meeting. I spoke with Megan briefly this morning and told her that we'd get together and we need to look at her budget, we need to, and that type of thing, as far as making those kinds of decisions, but it's not, not something that is normally brought to the board.
On a regular board. Yeah, it will be a public meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it'll be open to the public, but it's not something that we have to address here today and making decisions on, and the information she provided to me, that's not my area of expertise, so we need to get a little more into discussion than, and that can just be a decision between her and, and us as her, kind of the manager of that department.
So if it's going to be a public meeting, when will we know when it's going to be? Because I've been kind of looking at the numbers and I'm, I'm kind of interested from an accounting basis.
Yeah, I get, I, I asked Megan if she would wait. We would prefer to have her out in the, out in the country working on days that she can, and if they're, if it's supposed to rain this week, which I believe it is supposed to, then maybe come in on a rainy day and we can discuss it. So.
When, how will we know when it's scheduled?
Twenty-four hour notice on an agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so, there was a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the HVAC project update. Dustin.
Well, we're getting closer and closer. We've got, they've got five wells to drill and then they have, they're going to work on getting their main lines in. They're hoping to get that done today, but they're not sure if they're going to get there or not. The rain kind of threw them off and, and, out front, but they shouldn't be having that opened up by the end of the weekend, so we can start using that again, so, depending on how the concrete, how, how well that cures. So hopefully by Friday, probably Monday, they might, they should be able to start letting people back in.
How familiar are you with that point of entry? We, we had a person ask why the arches don't match.
Okay, yes, they.
And I think that's been resolved because I've talked.
I was just going to see what.
But he did, Sam actually sent me a text then with a copy of the, the plans and he said it, that's, it's being built according to the specs in the beginning, so.
If they were to build it to line the arches up, they would have had about a five foot wide and there's just not enough room to get, in the future, if they have somebody in there with a scanner, get that in there. So it had to be a certain, certain width and it just wouldn't have worked out to match those up. The only reason the arch is like that is to match the windows, basically, because most of the windows have arches above, just to kind of make that flow together, so.
Yep.
That's kind of that, because that's been, been asked quite a few times.
That's why I was seeing your answer here.
Because he was texting back and forth with me a couple of times and, and disagreeing with, he thought somebody had made a mistake and whatever, but then he did later yesterday afternoon, he texted back and said, here's a copy of the specs and it's being built.
How should he?
Yep, yep, so.
Any other questions?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes from May 8th, May 13th, and May 14th.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of claims for payment for May 15th.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment for May 15th, 2019, as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Utility permits and secondary roads.
There is one utility permit and I got plenty of things I can tell you about.
Okay.
I'll move to approve permit 515-19, as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so yesterday, you were gone Renee, but we opened the bids for some rock hauling and it was a big surprise, Mark Marietta got the stuff over by Alden and Gerke got the stuff over by Gifford. So I still have not spoken with our FEMA one-on-one person yet, which is getting kind of frustrating here, two months later to still not have a point of contact. So before we move forward with those bids, I'd like to talk to them, you know, we don't want to throw away a couple hundred thousand dollars if we can get it back. So I'm going to hold on to that for a while. And then all our projects going on, they're currently about halfway done. They're current, they're milling the top two inches on our asphalt job and then they, they waste that, they take it and they'll use it on some other project. So they're about halfway done with that so far. They're, north of town, they're beginning to put the new culvert in and south of town, they're ripping that bridge out. So our office is very busy right now, but it's good to get things rolling.
Is there a timeframe?
For which part?
The culverts.
Months for that one. One south of town, which should move pretty good.
Okay.
Gerke, Gerke kind of staged it so that while this other company's building the culvert on the north side, they could get the south one done and then Gerke will move in and finish that dirtwork.
Okay.
But yeah, to actually pour that box, probably a month or so.
No, sounds good.
Donna.
Question, you said the bridge south of town, is that the one by Gifford?
No, it's on 260th Street.
By United Players.
It's been closed, it's just west of United Players on the gravel.
Oh, west of the highway.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Not really.
Okay.
Business as usual.
All right. Okay, the resolution for agreement for assignment of certificates of purchase at tax sale. Michelle, do you want to explain?
Um, well, it's Stacy here.
Yep.
Basically, there's been a.
And then I'll fill in if needed.
I contacted Michelle a couple weeks ago, there's been a property behind mine that's been abandoned, so to speak, property taxes haven't been paid on since 2002, so the neighborhood's been kind of just taking care of it, not looking to buy the taxes on it and then look, try to acquire the deed on it. We have been able to locate the owner, so this is my first part of trying to get that property bought.
Okay.
Basically, what he's asking for is the assignment of the Hardin County Tax Sale Certificate that we've held since June 16th of 2003. We have not had any taxes paid for, you know, lots of, lots of years. It's costing the county to pay out, send out tax statements three or four times a year, just come back undeliverable. It's a business name that we just can't, we can't get a hold of.
Okay.
And they are not going to pay the taxes, so if we can assign this tax sale certificate over for the amount that Stacy's requesting, I feel that would be a win for us and the other taxing authorities so that we can get those taxes collected and a deed get issued, you know, when he goes through the process. He's contacted an attorney to get this taken care of and then we can get it into somebody's name that's going to take care of it and pay the taxes.
Right, good.
Good. Thank you for taking the initiative and thanks for working with him, Michelle.
And if there's, if there's anybody else that has properties like this, you know, we have lots and lots of Hardin County Tax Sales that people are just walking away from properties and it would be great to be able to get those assigned to people.
Right, okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution agreement for the assignment of certificates of purchase, tax sale, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those, oh, sorry, Nancy.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Change of status, emergency management.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Thomas Creighton, Emergency Management Coordinator, of a yearly salary of $50,000 effective May 25th, 2019. This was an appointment by the Emergency Management Commission and they're recommended hire.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favors? Yes.
Do we know when he's going to actually move into the county?
I believe Dave McDaniel said he was given 180 days to, to find a residence in Hardin County.
Is that from, is that an offer or from this?
I wasn't at the meeting, I guess I don't, I don't know.
You didn't say.
So from the.
Oh, I didn't see Dave, I'm sorry.
So that's six months.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The resolution creating and appointing a Hardin County EMS System Advisory Council. Did you want to get up and explain on this, please?
Yeah. So last night we discussed at the Hardin County EMS Council.
Could you, could you come up to the podium, please? Yeah, thank you.
I'm just going to forward our opinion, what we discussed with BJ last night.
All right.
So last night, we discussed as the Hardin County EMS Council to support this in what it is, what our belief is, excuse me, we do want to point out before we wholeheartedly support this, is according to the writing, you are creating a leadership council. We already have one in Hardin County. So we, our belief is that this is being created specifically for coming up with a recommendation to you gentlemen and lady on an amount of taxable monies to be brought in and then how to disperse that to the agencies. We believe that is the sole purpose of this council, that's why we're supporting it. And then once that is done, we do ask that it be terminated, because we already have a leadership and guidance council in place, we don't need to duplicate that. But as long as that, as long as this council is done and does what it's meant to do, what we believe it's supposed to do, then we, as a council, we wholeheartedly support that as EMS service directors.
I thought this was going to be more something that was just appointed to do the research.
Yes, that's it. It's, it's going to be a discussion of all parties involved to come forward with a recommendation on an amount to, on a way to bring forth taxable dollars.
So your commission already consists of these people?
It does not consist of mayors or trustees, but it is service directors, Hardin County Sheriff's Department, Hardin County EMA Coordinator, supervisors, Northeast Iowa has Matt, Hanson Family Hospital. Basically, the only people that aren't on this council are the townships and the mayors. But we want those people involved in the discussion of their property taxes.
Right, so they will be, they will be participating?
In that discussion, yes.
Okay, good.
And it's just an advisory?
And it's just an advisory, comes forth with a recommendation to you three and after that, and if they say we have a stalemate, then that'd be a problem, but we, yeah, we, we want them to come forth with a recommendation and as of that point, after their job is done, we, that's why we did put the sunset date in there.
Okay.
As we just do not want to duplicate a second EMS advisory council for ongoing afterwards.
Well, that makes sense too, yes, I understand that. Okay, okay.
Any other questions from anybody?
Just a quick question, so you're, I mean, you're trying, we have right now six EMS services in the county, I think, is that correct? There's two, two ALS, four BLS.
Right, and then the first responder groups.
Yeah, three or four first responders groups, so you're just looking for a way to support those.
Correct. And as we spoke last night, we don't want to get into the weeds, because we do have some people that will be on this advisory council that probably don't believe that they can help with service standards or response times or those things. So we want to stick to finding out what the model looks like and the dollar amount associated with it.
Then what model would that be, BJ?
I have no idea. That's what this council, this advisory council needs to figure out is.
Are you supporting the services that you have?
Yeah, I would prefer to keep it, my personal opinion, I like what Wright County did. They, Wright County supplemented the Belmont ambulance, the Eagle Grove ambulance, and the Clarion ambulance, three already established ambulances. I'm not sure how they worked with their first responders, but then they also allocated funding for medical direction, quality assurance people, so they are stipending a physician with $10,000 a year to bring them in to, you know, assure that there is a strong medical direction, director's presence. And so some of those things that I think we have a hard time sometimes recruiting and retaining medical directors, and then there's also the medical directors that are very involved but get next to no pay. So those things to make sure that there's good, clear, consistent direction from the top down. I think the other important thing about the first responders being involved, you have entities, like the Alden first responders explained to me, they can leave, go out, bandage, get every, you know, stabilize the situation to best of their scope of practice, but they've utilized supplies and fuel and human resources, but have no means of recuperating any of those costs. This would, hopefully, the advisory council would find a way to formulate some type of funding to cover those expenses that are incurred, so they can keep continuing that service, but also making sure that our ALS and BLS services that are providing the transportation can visibly stay solvent as well.
You don't know what that, what that funding would look like, but you had given me two different scenarios.
No, right.
You've spoken at two different times.
Yep, and I would hope this.
You're struggling with.
Right, I would hope the council would, you know, figure out a dollar amount that it's going to take to either keep the service like it is today or better the service and come back and say, this is the dollar amount, and then we would determine what kind of a levy rate that would look like and see if it's feasible and, you know, and then put it out to the voters to determine if they would support that service.
So, and those two different, one was a per capita basis and then the other one you had talked about a backfill for services that were not solvent, so.
Right.
That's what I, and you, I mean.
I'd let this council, I really don't have a preference. We talked last night, I asked Cory, you know, looking at the ALS districts, how they're drawn, he said that the north, the Iowa Falls ALS Response District was probably a little heavier in population, so that needs to be taken into consideration as well. So I don't know what the exact best practice is at this point, but I think it's worth good discussion and not going in with a preconceived notion that, you know, that we're going to have to pick winners and losers.
And the other thing, I mean, the supervisors could just raise fees for rural services to supplement the communities that are supplying services to their areas without a reference.
To a certain extent, I believe.
We have, we have the authority to give what we want through the rural services or the general fund to supplement either one. Is that what your question was?
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to.
No different than a library or anything else.
Right.
Because I, I'm just, you know, pretty new to the EMS thing, so I'm just trying to educate myself. Like I said, you presented the two different, two, and one we probably support more so than the other.
Sure.
Because, you know, we've got a huge investment. Yeah, the taxpayers of Iowa Falls have invested a sizable amount of money in, in providing not only coverage for the city of Iowa Falls, but the surrounding areas formerly covered by AMR.
Right, yeah, I, I agree. I just think that there needs to be some really good conversation about how that's going to be divide, you know, how we can get the first responder groups and those BLS ambulances to remain, you know, in the picture as well. Somebody last night brought up, you know, manage it like the townships manage the fire protection and, you know, that's a good model, except some of the fire departments are struggling collecting money from the townships. I think Mayor Dunn would agree that, you know, they've looked at, gone to the fire districts to try to get some funding to offset equipment that is primarily used outside of the city of Eldora and it, there's been some hurdles.
And some pushback.
Yeah.
There's no pot of gold there.
No, no.
I know, we, I spoke at some different summits and things like that. Has gained probably at least, you know, in the central Iowa area, a lot of people, you know, know that any ambulance service was put together fairly quickly in Iowa Falls. So I tell them what we have here and they are very envious, they would love to have, you know, the amount of EMS services already here and consists.
Right.
You know, the supervisors just really, in my opinion, need to help and keep that supported, because there's, there are places where, you know, there's only one service and they're about to lose that.
Yep.
And, you know, you have all these communities who have these really good services in place and the first responders, so.
Right.
It's exciting that you're looking at supporting those.
Yeah, I would definitely not want to be in Chickasaw County shoes, I wouldn't want to be in the city of Independence's shoes right now. We could probably list a host of communities that are on the verge of losing EMS and with no options and without the leadership that you guys shown in Iowa Falls to put something together.
I mean, you have two really good ALS services in the county, so.
But for what you guys did in a short time, the city of Independence right now and Chickasaw County are really struggling to find, you know, that intestinal fortitude to get up and say, we've got to do something, because this is, you know, an immediate need, so. But I think the advisory council can come up with some good ideas and, and determine, you know, at least one course of action. We did put in here that by, what was the date, Ben, September?
September 1st.
First, to come back and report to the supervisors. If there's something that can be, you know, brought to us that, you know, there's a consensus on or some agreement, that would be great. If by September 1st, need to come and say, hey, we need more time, because we're going to do this the right way, you know, I think that's reasonable as well. But this isn't something that we want to just, you know, throw spaghetti at the wall and hope it sticks as well. But I don't want Iowa Falls or Ackley or Hubbard to be in the shoes of Independence or Chickasaw County anytime in the near future, so I think this is, you know, probably not as proactive as it should have been maybe five, 10 years ago, but it's proactive today. Looking at, you know, we're stable right now, but we need to do something to, you know, be proactive and preserve what we do have.
Yeah, and I don't think those services are probably in, near the shape that some of the other, because I've spoken with someone on the phone, and I, you know, most of the services are stable. They're supported by the communities. You have very good coverage for the residents of the county right now.
Yep.
And that really doesn't mirror some of the other areas and some of the other agencies that have called just, you know, wanting to know the process that was in place for us to take over for AMR.
Yep, yeah.
Well, it's, will be interesting to see how this comes out and what the recommendation is. I can almost see the downside too, but this happens in more areas than one, where they'll come in with a recommendation for a levy. It's something that we would levy countywide when, like you said, you've put a lot of money into it already, the city of Iowa Falls. I think each of the communities has put their own community dollars into it, so an additional levy will be kind of like double taxation for the same service. Townships have the authority to levy for fire and for ambulance. I know, years ago, I know it was, those monies were mostly contributed to fire and not the ambulance services, but all of the levies are limited by, by legislature. So having townships, you know, limited by what they can give, I can see where a centralized levy would be good, then everybody's paying the same, but.
Because Eldora is also, they have a substantial investment in their ambulance service, so does the other four communities. EMS services are inexpensive and training. I mean, every one of the communities have a substantial investment. I didn't mean to say that, you know, Iowa Falls is any different from our peers in the group.
No, right.
It's just that we just had to do it really fast.
Yeah, so.
I'm curious to see what they come in with.
Yeah.
Be interesting to hear.
And, and again, it is an advisory, the last statement in here, the Board, Board of Supervisors will consider recommendations of the advisory council and reserves the right to adopt or otherwise take appropriate action or not on such recommendations. So, but I, I am curious what people want to come in with and what ideas we can have.
So I just hope everybody on the list participates, including townships, cities, and so on. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution creating and appointing a Hardin County EMS System Advisory Council.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
BJ?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for all the EMS providers and city staff's input and help with this, I appreciate it.
Okay, the Hardin County Sheriff's Office, Teamsters 238 Master Contract.
I'll move to approve the Teamsters 238 Master Contract for the Hardin County Sheriff's Office, as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Recorder's monthly report.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly recorder's report as recorder Caddener presented to the board.
I will second.
Any other discussion? This is for the month of April. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Applications for use of courthouse grounds. I think we've got two of them here.
I'll make a motion to approve both applications. The first is utilization, they're by the same group, the Hardin County Bible Reading Marathon. It's the Iowa 99 County Bible Reading Marathon Group. Two, I make a motion to approve the use on July 1st and 2nd, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And July 14th, 7:15 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And, public comments. Julie.
What about IRVM?
Um, well, we discussed that earlier and we removed that from the agenda. Actually, that's not really something that needs to be put on the board's agenda for a decision. She's wanting to know about chemicals and the costs of chemicals.
Which actually is, is a big deal. I don't know if you saw that on Monday, or was it Friday? The $2 billion jury award concerning Monsanto and Roundup. So, yes, herbicide and cost and what. So, yes, herbicide and cost and what she's using is important and should be discussed.
She's not using Roundup though.
And people want to know what she's using and, you know, how much are we spending, are we, you know, what's liability? I just think it's important not to leave that out because, as you know, foreign markets and are, what we grow, the food we try to sell, the EU, you know, doesn't want to buy what we grow. Do the herbicides and what we use impact markets? I think it's an important thing to discuss.
I'm, just, I will just say myself, I am, that's not my area of expertise and I would have to rely on what Megan tells me and I'm sure if you wanted to have the discussion with her, she can explain to you what's in all of those chemicals.
You know, in the, in, here in a meeting publicly, so people know what she's dealing with.
This was discussed at the beginning of the meeting, you could have been here.
But I wasn't, but my thing is it should be discussed.
We've got the idea, Julie, thank you.
Openly because of the issues that, from the past.
It will be, and that's what they've said.
Any other business?
I've got a question. Now that I had a couple days of no rain and a day of sunshine, when they add this extra gravel to the road, how is it?
Rock.
The rock, how does it like make a new bed? You know, they want to improve the bed so it's better for next year. With it being hard like that and they put rock, how does that?
Work down.
Work down in here to make the bed stronger?
Taylor, that's your area of expertise.
It won't be hard all the time, I mean, the next time it rains, all of a sudden that will all mesh together. You know, that smaller material is mostly clay, clay absorbs water. Yeah. So I understand when it's dry, you put the rock down, it's just gonna sit on top, but it'll always rain again. That's the motor grader's job, worst case scenario, they can always come, bring their blade and they can dig a couple inches and you mix it all together and put it back down. There's ways to do it all.
Well, I guess I was just wondering, is there, is there a plan to like improve it because they're saying they want to make it better? Kind of wondering what would you do to make it better?
The dream scenario to make it better would cost us more money than we're gonna have in the next 20 years, so. We gotta work with what we got, Bob, and that's kind of the situation we're in. I'd love to dig all the bases up and restart, but.
What would be the pattern if you were to do, start from scratch, tear it up and do it again? How would you lay a, how would you lay a foundation?
I'd have to pick miles here and there and figure out the best method first. Some counties have experimented with it before, cause you got roads that have way too much clay in them. And they've tried digging it up and you spray some stuff down to stabilize the base, so. There's counties doing the research, the best method just hasn't been found yet.
You know, is all the rock that's put on the road, bought from the same quarry, from the same place?
Uh, we have two quarries in the county that we're utilizing.
That was Mark Marietta and Gerke's, they were the two that got the bids earlier.
Any other public comments? Yes?
I was just going to share, if you haven't heard, this week is hospital week, so at Hanson Family Hospital, we're busy recognizing our patients, our providers and our clinicians for the great work they do to serve our county and communities. Just a couple of the other key initiatives that we're continuing to work on is Dr. Gibson's arrival, he's expected to come in September. And then the second thing that we're continuing to work on is our patient portal and how we're communicating with patients most effectively through that. So if you have any questions or anything going on at the hospital, I can answer those after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Other business?
I just might want to say something, our tax sale is gonna be the third Monday of June, the 17th. If people don't want their taxes to go to tax sale, they need to have them paid by the Friday before so that they're, they're paid before we start our tax sale in the morning, on Monday.
Okay. Any other business? Alright, last for a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second. Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.